I'd like to call to order the Monday, June 3 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At this time to lead us in our invocation and pledge to the American flag is Reverend Glenn McCraney, a retired Navy Chaplain. Please stand.
And tonight, let us pause and remember a special group of people in our personal prayers. For Thursday will be the 69th anniversary of D-Day, 6th of June, the largest amphibious landing in Europe during World War II. This group is now in their late 80s and 90s. The people of Currituck owe them a deep gratitude, for we can meet tonight and pray in freedom and without fear. Let us pray. Et on God, strong to save, whose arms bounds the restless ways, and steals the quaking heart. Hear us when we pray unto you tonight as we gather in this public forum. Our world is restless, and in some places very dangerous. We are confronted with an uncertain future in the turmoil of uncertainty. We seek and request your holy abiding presence and to be in our personal lives. And thy divine strength to be with us in our meeting tonight. Grant unto our elected Commissioners wisdom, fortitude to make right decisions, coordination among themselves as elected servants of Currituck County's people. For us, may we always seek to love others, to do your will, to give in service to our community, rather than always wanting to be served. As we gather tonight, forgive us for our shortcomings and give us strength to be a holy people. In your name we pray, and all God's people say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor McCraney. I have two amendments to the budget tonight. The first one is to continue, what did I say, the budget? It still is on my mind. To the agenda tonight is Item C under Public Hearings is to continue that and to add a closed session pursuant to General Statutes 143-318.11 A6 to discuss a personnel matter.
Make a motion to accept those amendments.
I have a motion to accept and approve. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Next item is public comment. First person we have signed up tonight is Ms. Mary Etheridge. I ask you please state your name and address for the record. And Mr. McCree, you are the timekeeper.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Charver Road. My family and I have been involved in litigation with Currituck County since 2011 over illegal spot zoning in our neighborhood. At that time, Mr. Griggs and Mr. McCord were not serving on the board, and Mr. Martin was the only Commissioner voting against a junkyard to be located in our community. The courts have since ruled in our favor, saying indeed it was illegal spot zoning. I would like to quote a 19th century historian, Edward "Edward" Hale. "I'm only one, but I am one. I cannot do everything, but I can do some things. And because I cannot do everything, I will not refuse to do the something that I can do. What I can do, I should do, and what I should do, by the grace of God, I will do." What can I do? I can continue to fight and hopefully prevent this from ever happening to another citizen in Currituck County. What should I do? Appeal the court's rulings that the county does not have to pay our court costs, and hopefully prevent this from ever happening to any other citizens in Currituck County, where they have to feel like they have to use their own money to fight county government when the courts have ruled that their actions were illegal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. Next person we have is Ms. Toni Tab. I'll ask you to please state your name and address for the agenda.
Hi, I'm Toni Tab. I live at 328 Mason Lane in Moayok. And I'm just coming tonight because tonight is the, as I understand it, the only public hearing that we're going to have on the budget, that there may be a vote tonight. So I do want to speak out and say that I moved to Currituck County back in 2004, like many other folks from across the border, to escape high taxes and too much government. And now we're facing a situation where taxes, and I do understand what revenue neutral means, but it's still an increase in my taxes, bottom line. But this is not the only increase in my taxes, because I'm not only a resident of Currituck County, but I'm a resident of North Carolina and the United States. And I don't know about the rest of you, but if you are a taxpayer, which there are a certain number of us who are still taxpayers, that number is shrinking, but we, our taxes did go up at the beginning of this year. Our health insurance premiums have gone up. We may not be able to get health insurance in the next year or so when Obamacare kicks in. In addition to that, we're having to lay off people in our small business that my husband manages and another one that we have up in Northern Virginia. We have to be cognizant of the number of employees we have because of that. And what we see in the news, that's the most frightening thing I've ever seen in my lifetime, is an IRS that is going after citizens based on what political party you're a part of or, you know, your way of thinking, whether you're conservative, whether you're a Christian, whether you're pro-life. I think that we just, we need to remember that as we make these kinds of decisions, that some of these things that we're spending our money on may be a little frivolous when we look at the big picture and what's coming down the road for us. Our federal government is preparing for a financial collapse and civil unrest. They're buying lots of bullets, something 1.4 billion or so. That should put fear in all of our hearts. So I'm here just to say we need to recognize that we're not in a situation where business is usual, and I hope people will take their responsibilities with seriousness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tab. That is the only people we had signed up tonight for a public comment. Is there anyone who did not have an opportunity? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public comments and move to the first agenda item under Public Hearing. Public Hearing and Possible Action on Annual Budget for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2014. I believe Mr. Scanlon is going to do a presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But before we do that, I've asked Mr. McCree to explain the Machinery Act of 1933?
It is a 1930 statute.
Early 1930s that establishes a tax revaluation, and North Carolina is to be done at least every eight years.
That's correct.
And give a little explanation as to why this happens.
Well, again, it happens because the General Assembly has required units of local government to, at a minimum of every eight years, revalue property within the county. Upon revaluation and determination, the value of property and land in the county, the Board of Commissioners, as you all have been discussing in recent weeks, must advertise what a revenue neutral rate would be relative to the new valuation of property within the county. You still may set a tax rate up to $1.50 per $100 of valuation in North Carolina, but of course this county has had a tradition, and most have had a tradition of not going anywhere near that $1.50 maximum amount allowed. The process we've also talked about with regard to revaluation for persons who are concerned about the value of their property, whether it be too high in their estimation or too low, is to first of all seek a remedy or solution by an informal process with the tax assessor, Tracy Sample. He's still, I think, receiving persons' requests for review of their valuation. If that is not satisfactory to a taxpayer, they then may appeal to the Board of Equalization and Review. In this county, you, as a Board of Commissioners, serve as a Board of Equalization and Review, and I believe you will be convening in July of this year to receive, hear, and consider appeals of property tax values of, again, citizens who do not believe they were given proper redress before the tax assessor. And from there, then a property owner may, according to the Machinery Act, proceed to appeal to the North County Property Tax Commission, which is a quasi judicial body of five persons who consider appeals from county boards of equalization and review. And then from there, a taxpayer may then proceed to the appellate courts for review. But that's the process that we are now in, again, required every eight years. I'd be glad to answer any question any Board member might have or for clarification.
Some communities do it more often.
That's correct. There is the ability of a county to adopt a schedule less than every eight years. Some have chosen to go with revaluation every four years.
And I believe in Virginia, they do it every year?
I do not know what Virginia's practice is.
I know every year there's a big article in the paper about the valuations of, or every two years about the valuation. So it's required by General Statute and affected by the economy.
That's correct. I mean, some years, I believe eight years ago, the economy was very strong and doing well. Property values were on a dramatic increase and rise, particularly in this area. And so you saw, I think, a rather large increase in the value of property within Currituck and certainly Dare Counties. Conversely, we're now in a downturn in the economy, and with the reduction in property values and the crisis that the country's gone in the last four years, this revaluation, I think, caught, for the most part, the downside of property values, although, again, as the manager has reported to you recently, we do understand there are certain segments or areas within this county that have seen an increase in their property value, or they have been able to maintain that property value similar to what it was eight years ago.
So what if we decided we just won't do it?
You have no choice in the matter. You are required by law to do it.
Okay. Does anyone have any more questions for Mr. McCree?
I do. I don't know if this question would be for Ike or if it would be for Dan. What are the costs associated to Currituck County with doing a reevaluation to the taxpayers, roughly?
The total cost of evaluation is probably in the range of $800,000 to $900,000. That's more than just, there's certainly the contractor piece to go out and evaluate each piece of property, but there's also some technology pieces of going in and upgrading the property tax records, bringing over the rate schedules. So that all isn't directly attributed to the contractor actually in the field doing the work. There's some IT issues that are worked out in the background, too. But it's about an $800,000, $900,000 cost. And as we mentioned during our budget work sessions, the Board of Commissioners are required to annually fund 1/8 of that, so that when the next revaluation is due in eight years from now, that money has been systematically set aside so that it will be there. So in our budget, we have included 1/8 of what we anticipate the next cost to be, so that it's pre-funded.
Okay.
Anything?
No, I was just going to come out. The reason I ask that is that probably somebody hasn't asked is why do we do it every eight years? Why not every four? I mean, we talked that it could be done sooner, but there are costs associated with doing that, and doing it once every eight years is obviously less expensive than doing it every year.
Yes, sir.
Because if we did it every year, it'd be roughly eight or nine, what, million dollars? If we did it every year over an eight-year period of time?
Yes. Yes.
Well, I did, I did ask Mr. Scanlon. I know that I've gotten a couple of phone calls and questions that why do we have to change the tax rate? What would happen if we didn't? So I've asked Mr. Scanlon to do a little bit of, to show tonight what that would mean. I don't know exactly when that is in his presentation, but without further ado.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is going to be an abbreviated form of the presentation that I did for you two weeks ago, and as the Chairman mentioned, there's a couple additional pieces of information in response to some public questions we got during the course of the last two weeks. So presenting to you tonight, starting off with, as one of the speakers said at the public comment section, state government, local government, North Carolina, you are, we are required by law to actually prepare a balanced budget. The federal government does not have that requirement, but you are compelled by law to do a balanced budget. And the budget, of course, we're presenting tonight, is a balanced budget. We'll get jump right into it. The general fund is the manstay of Currituck County operations. This is what, most of the services that the community is familiar with comes out of the general fund. As we just covered by statute, here's the reference. Every eight years, or at a maximum of every eight years, we are required to do property appraisal by statute. This particular reappraisal, we saw a third decrease in the total assessment of Currituck And this just kind of graphically shows over the last several years, you see that was the, eight years ago, the reappraisal. We saw a substantial increase in valuation. We steadied off, and now we're seeing the decrease in this revaluation. The decrease was not equally spread across the county. You're seeing in the first column, 2012, 13, that is prior to the revaluation. The second column is after the valuation. You can see before the valuation, almost two thirds, or two thirds of the valuation of the county was on the Outer Banks. One third was on the mainland. What we're seeing here is a dynamic property valuation shift from the Outer Banks to the mainland with the valuation. We're just a little over half the valuation now is on the Outer Banks, shifting more to the mainland. But if you look at the bottom of the chart, you can see that valuation shift is not equally spread across the mainland. As you move in, probably from the Coin Jacques Bridge north, you're seeing property values for the eight years stayed a little more steady, held their value, didn't see the decrease. So that area is actually seeing, and we're going to see the true impact of the revenue neutral rate. This is a statute, we are required by law, again, when you do a reevaluation, we have to disclose the revenue neutral. But as was mentioned, the Board of Commissioners have the authority to set any tax rate you want up to $1.50, but you do need to disclose what this revenue neutral rate is. Walk through this as we presented last time. This is the current year. Our valuation, this is pre-revaluation. We were valued a little over $8 billion. Our tax rate is .32, so it generates $26.7 million. If we, if this was not a revaluation year, there is a small percentage of growth every year that the county sees valuation is based on January 1 evaluation. So since last January, there would have been new construction, remodeling, those kinds of things that would add value to the county. This is a little over a 1% increase. So if this was not a revaluation year, we'd be about $8.4 billion, .32 cents. We would generate a little over $27 billion. So the revenue neutral concept is this. We see our new reevaluation. The county dropped a third. We're now $5.6 billion. So what is the rate that we would have to set to be able to generate $27 million? But before I ask that question, the question that seemed to be, you get a lot since the last presentation, is why raise the rate? Why can't we just leave the rate at .32? Well, you can. If you leave the rate at .32, you'll see that that would generate $17.9 million. That is a $9 million decrease in revenue from last year to this year. That's about a fifth of the budget that we would have to cut out if the Board wanted to hold the rate at .32. So that raises a couple of questions. There's many different ways we can approach having to look at a reduction in the budget. One way, option one, would be, $9 million is about the amount that we fund education. We could take the approach that we would completely wipe away next year, all funding to public education, which, again, is about $9 million. That's not realistic, but it certainly would be an option. Option two would be, if the Board of Commissioners took the position and said that education, public safety are critical services that we must provide, and we don't want to go in and decrease any of those budgets. So we want to look at all the budgets below a public safety, and we want to be able to generate or cut $9 million out of the budget. This list is all the departments that would completely be eliminated to be able to generate a $9 million reduction. My office, airport, animal control, although we do have to have a Board of Commissioners to start working for free, COA, cooperative extension, economic development, mercy management, finance, forestry, human resources, ITS, jury commission, JCPC, the legal department, all library services, all parks and recreation services, public transportation, incomplete rural center, all senior programs, soil conservation, and all funding to the volunteer fire departments. All of that would have to be cut in order to generate a $9 million deduction in the budget. Now, that's awful severe. I mean, that basically cripples most of the services the community is available or familiar with seeing. So what option three would be, what if we went in and looked at the budget and said, let's take the $9 million and distribute it proportionally amongst the departments? What that impact would be? Well, first of all, public education would take a $1.8 million hit. What does that mean? Right now in the budget, we're proposing to fund, per student, $2,364 per student to education. A $1.8 million cut, we will drop that funding to $485 per student. In addition, EMS would be cut $1.3 million. What does that mean? That means that two full ambulances that we operate today would be completely eliminated from service for the remainder of the year. The sheriff's office would take a $1.2 million hit. What would that mean in her office? That would mean that we would have to riff 25 officers from that department. So addressing a $9 million budget, a decrease, in order to try to keep the tax rate the same, would have a significant impact on the level of services that the county provides. So it goes back to this question. What is the rate of revenue or tax rate that would need to be assessed against this new reevaluation to be able to keep and maintain the level of services that we have historically provided without necessarily increasing that level of services? And that rate, as we advertised, is .48.5, which generates, as you can see, a little over $27 million. Does that mean everybody will see a tax increase of that amount? It does not. It depends on the interplay between your valuation and what happened individually in your valuation and this new tax rate. About 64% of the citizens, the property owners in Currituck County, will see some level of increase in their tax liability, but 36% of the property owners in the county will actually see a decrease. And if you recall from previous slides, majority of those decreases will be on the Outer Banks, and some portions, some property owners on the southern part of the county will actually see decreases.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir.
You're on the slide. Isn't that pretty, pretty consistent with the same thing that happened at the last reevaluation with the, with the increase/decrease being reversed?
Yes, sir. In fact, it's probably more severe. Eight years ago, their increase in valuation was so staggering that the folks that were, the 36% of the folks that are seeing a decrease saw a substantial increase in valuation and property liability. You are correct that this is actually reversing some of the trend you saw eight years ago in the revaluation.
Well, I'll say this, Mr. Scanlon, that eight years ago, before the last revaluation, the county was, everybody in the county was paying .64.
Yes, sir.
Per $100 on evaluation. That's, that's a huge difference.
And these are wild swings, but if you look at, I talked to our counterparts in Dare County who are going through revaluation right now. Some of this phenomenon, some of this drastic swings you see, I think is inherited in coastal properties. I think being a coastal community, the valuations on the Outer Banks, certainly there's an element of speculation and market-driven, which is what the reassessment, the revaluation is supposed to do. You see these kind of wild swings. If you were in the Piedmont, you wouldn't see such drastic swings from one revaluation to another. But again, not everybody is going to necessarily see an increase in their own individual tax liability. Again, it depends on what happened to your valuation times the rate. And I'll put a footnote out there, as the attorney said, folks that still have an issue or disagree with their valuation, they still have time. They can call the tax department, and they still have the opportunity to have that valuation looked at. And again, if they're not happy there, the Board of ENR will be sitting sometime in July, and property owners will have an opportunity to appeal to the Board of ENR. This kind of goes back and looks at the region stuff. We have historically enjoyed being one of the lowest taxing entities in northeastern North Carolina. Even at a .48 cent tax rate, you see that we still are in that position. On the list here, these are just a survey of some surrounding counties and stuff, and you can see we're still the third lowest in that group. Dare County being the lowest, but most of Dare County is within an incorporated area. When you factor in the incorporated area, the town tax on top of that, very few people in Dare actually would be paying that rate.
Mr. Scanlon also, how about Lake Proquemans? Do you have any idea when the last, when their last evaluation was done?
No, sir, I do not.
Theirs would be next year.
Well, I'm getting ready to say, we're not comparing apples to apples with that particular slide.
Yeah. I know Chawan is going through theirs right now. Dare and Currituck are finishing up.
Proquemans is going through theirs now.
But you can see, I mean, although it is an increase, we still enjoy as being one of the lower taxing entities in the region. Getting into the budget itself, the entire general fund budget is a 1.4% increase over the year before. There is no cost of living adjustment in this budget. There's actually no proposed changes at all to personnel, except one that we'll talk about in a few minutes. We had to deal with an unfunded mandate from the state of North Carolina dealing with the unemployment insurance. We've discussed that. The two new programs are two expansions that we're looking at doing. We are looking at modifying how we provide EMS coverage on the Outer Banks. We do have a seasonal unit, as Commissioner Idlet pointed out at the last presentation. We have a seasonal unit that we ramp up between Memorial Day and Labor Day. We're just, we're going to take the funding from that and redeploy how we've been handling that by putting a one-man team up in Carova and pair with volunteers up in the Carova area to modify how we're providing EMS services on the Outer Banks. And we're also looking, as part of the Maple Complex, the Commerce Park out there, we had to remove the shooting range that the Sheriff's Department historically used. We're putting funds in the budget to replace that. This is the general fund budget, and you can see over the last period of time, we have been relatively, well, for several years, the general fund budget actually decreased. You're seeing, we saw a modest increase, but you can see we've been pretty steady with our general fund budget.
One other thing, Mr. Scanlon. Back to what a lot of people don't understand, EMS services that we're talking about in Carova is paid for out of occupancy tax. Has nothing to do with the $27 million general fund budget that we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Here's how the general fund is funded. We're predominantly funded out of property tax. About a half of the funding that supports the general fund is property taxes, and another 11% is sales tax and other taxes. Here are the top five funding sources. Property taxes, again, being the largest funding for local government. Here's a comment, a slide to show, the Board has been pretty good about maintaining a very stable tax rate. Prior to 2004, 2005, we would have had that .64. You would have suddenly decreased for revaluation. And other than revaluation, the tax rate actually has never been changed, or not in this short period of time, has not been changed by the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners have always held to a pretty stable tax rate.
Mr. Scanlon, isn't it true that if we saw a rise in property values or actually income here in the county, that we could adjust the rate of taxation in two years?
Yes, sir. You can change, the only time you can set the rate or affect the rate is during the budget process, but absolutely, at .48 cent, if this time next year, as the economy continues to recover, and we see some construction growth and increase in the valuation, the base of the county, the Board certainly would be in a position to start looking at that rate and making assessment at that time, whether you can look at lowering it. But that's next year, and every year thereafter, you'll have the opportunity in the budget to look at that rate.
And if you see large jumps in a trend, there's nothing that says you couldn't go back and do another reevaluation in four years, which then would have the effect of the same?
Yes, sir. On the expenditure side of the general fund, this is how the budget breaks down. You can see public, well, education is the largest single thing that we do. Public safety is a block, is the largest category. And you can see between public safety and education, it's almost two thirds of our budget. We're a service providing organization, and you can see, if you look, another way of looking expenditures, about 43% of the cost is in our personnel. expenditures, about 43% of the cost is in our personnel. Here are the top five largest departments we fund. Again, there's education at $9 million. I showed that earlier. If we wanted to make a $9 million decrease, you could see that education would have to absorb the whole thing. But there's your five largest funded departments. Here are the five largest increases in the budget this year over last year. You're seeing the EMS budget increase. There's some equipment in there and taking on the new service in Carova. Again, that has been offset by other revenues. The sheriff's office, the shooting range is in that. That is a capital expense, but it shows up in her budget. COA, we're opening up the COA facility in August. We currently fund them at $75,000. You're seeing a slight increase. Our responsibility is maintaining the building and the grounds. Their responsibility is the staff in the building in the educational instructional piece. So you can see a $100,000 increase for having that facility. This is how our employment is broken down across our sources. Again, over half of our employees are hired, employed in the public safety side of our Again, we're hiring four people to provide, it takes four people to be able to provide 24/7, 365, one person up in Carova. So it takes four people to be able to manage that shift. Here's our funding for education, as I mentioned earlier. Currently, we're spending $2,364 per student. And although it looks like a modest decrease in the total amount of appropriation for Board of Education, bring your attention to the fact that the student body is actually decreasing. So depending on how you look at the schedule, it's actually an increase in how much money we're funding per student because the student body is dropping from 3,800 to 3,800. And actually, that's been a trend that we've been seeing for the last several years. So you take the general fund and we add the, some other service funds on it to start looking at building our operating budget. And you can see we're actually dropping the operating budget from last year to this year. And here's the funds we're adding in. To the general fund, you added the revaluation. We mentioned we have to annually fund one-eighth of that. And so we're setting aside $123,000 a year to be able to fund next service districts. Enterprise funds are our water and sewer systems. In our utility funds, we're proposing some rate changes. Wanted to review those with you. In Newtown Road, we're changing right now, they have a, it's a wastewater system. Their average monthly rate is a flat rate and we're proposing to change them over to a volumetric rate, which means that, and we're proposing a one-to-one to their water bill. So whatever the water bill is, will be the same amount would equal with their wastewater bill. It is about equal to what their flat rate is. So this is a modest increase to a modest decrease for the folks there. Moyoc Commons, we're actually seeing a decrease with the opening of the new wastewater plant in Moyoc. We're starting to back out of the small treatment plant that's in Moyoc Commons. That's allowed us to do two things. We can decrease the district tax around food line from 20 cents to 10 cents. And to decrease, they have a volumetric rate of, right now, it's three and a half times the water. We're dropping that back to three. And the last one is Ocean Sands. This is actually a recommendation from the advisory board that you have for Ocean Sands. They have a major upgrade that they have to undertake over the next five years with their wastewater plant. And that advisory board is recommending to this board that you raise the revenue through two functions or two actions. One is to implement a 5-cent district tax and to change their volumetric rate from one-to-one to one and a half times the water rate. Now we're looking at the total budget for the whole county. And you can see, it's actually a decrease over the last couple of years also. We get there by adding the capital funds. The three probably large projects about, you know, we had a category, it's a large project that we're looking to undertake next year, is the construction of an animal shelter, public beach access in the Corolla area, and adding the cultural heritage museum to the rural center. I would like to point out that these are all capital projects funded items. If the board chose to decrease or to eliminate any one or all of these, it would have no impact on the 48 cents. These are not funded by property taxes. Briefly show the animal shelter. This is the location out at the Currituck Community Center. There's two reasons why we're moving this project and why this project is a priority for the Board of Commissioners. One of them is, you see the red line, that is currently Airport Road. It's the access of how you get to the airport, how you get to the animal shelter, how you get to the transfer station. The master plan for the airport shows that being converted to the south, the southern taxiway. That is a project that we have received favorable response from the state to get 90% state money, 10% local money. The state is pledging $2.5 million to do that project. By doing that project, we can increase the amount of activity at our airport, which brings revenue to the county. So by spending the money to build a shelter, the shelter is in conflict with the taxiway. So by us spending the money to move the shelter, will qualify us for about $2.5 million of state money. The second thing is for anybody who's had an opportunity to be out of the shelter, the shelter's been there quite some time. It's served its useful purpose. It's antiquated. It's in dire need of being replaced. And this is the facility we're talking about replacing. That project is actually more than the shelter that's actually, the one that's most visible from Airport Road. It actually replaces the shelter. The current contractor has, I think, two or three outbuildings that replaces those. It also replaces the animal control building and the quarantine building in the back. So that project actually is a little bit more comprehensive than just the shelter itself. It's, we have, right now, we're in the process of evaluating RFQs, request for qualifications that we put out. We're asking for the preliminary schematic designs of a 10,000 square foot building. This slide shows you where and how we came up with that number. We are basically doubling the amount of square footage that's associated with the animal shelter itself and not increasing any of the space that's associated with animal control or the quarantine area. And we did that, we rounded up to 10,000. This is the budget that we have blocked against a 10,000 square foot building. I will comment that this has gotten a lot of play in the paper, but these are strictly budgetary numbers. The 2.5 is the entire project. The building itself is being projected about 1.6. This project has been competitively bid under the design-build concept. Hopefully, the competitive nature is bringing these values down. I took a question today about this project. At this point in time, the Board of Commissioners have not committed to building anything. The budget you may or may not adopt tonight doesn't commit you to anything for the animal shelter. How this project moves forward, we'll be coming back to you as an individual item for your consideration. The staff is right now reviewing the RFQs. We will be bringing to you for your consideration who we propose to be the best qualified architectural design and build team. The board at that time will take an action on hiring them. We'll be able to sit down with that team and evaluate this project to determine whether 10,000 square foot is an appropriate size of this building. The building could be larger. It could be smaller. It could be, the board has the flexibility. It could be that it's more on the money side. The board could come back and say, well, instead of a project that's a 2.5 million project, we'd like to see a budget that's, you know, a $2 million and have the architect show you what that building is. So at this point in time, you still maintain a lot of flexibility and control over this facility. And by adopting the budget tonight, if you so choose, you have not sacrificed or done anything with that flexibility. In fact, by adopting the budget, you have not actually approved anything towards the construction of this project here.
Mr. Scanlon, you stated just a few minutes ago, though, if we decided not to build the animal shelter, it would have no impact on the tax rate.
Correct.
I mean, some people probably don't understand that. I don't know that I fully do. I do, you know, I do understand it, but it's confusing. If you would go into that a little bit, I would appreciate it.
Right now, the way the budget's set up, and if you go look at the budget documents, if the project is, I mean, if the project was, we set it up on a $2.5 million budget. If that was a real number and we were funding the project at 2.5, that project is proposed to be funded out of land transfer tax that we have collected over time. Actually, we have the money. We're not looking at having to borrow money to build this facility. We have traditionally balanced a debt program with building with a pay-as-you-go. This project has been discussed for three or four years now. So while it has been in the conversation stage, we have been setting money aside. So we have accumulated enough money to do this. It is not coming out of the 48 cents. It's not coming out of property tax. It's not coming out of any of the general fund money. So by building this or not building this has no impact whatsoever on the general fund. So if folks feel like, well, you could cut this project and drop that 48 back down to 40, no, because none of this money is in the 48.5 cent, nor is any of this money in the rural center, nor is any of this money in the sheriff's shooting range. So all three of those capital projects are listed separately as capital projects because they're getting funded through capital revenues and not general property tax revenues.
Thank you for explaining that. I've had numerous questions about that myself.
And that is a quick, I presented, the first time I presented the budget was at your last meeting on May 20th. Tonight is June 3rd. You have a, you are required by law to have a public hearing on the document. Depending on what you hear at the public hearing, you have the option, you may or may not adopt it tonight. That's your discretion. The only thing that you have to do is you have to adopt this by July 1st in order for it to be affected. So you certainly can, depending what you hear tonight, you could take action tonight or you could take action on your next meeting or you could call a special meeting if you needed to. And that's the budget in brief, the Reader's Digest version. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scanlon, we talked about the sheriff's shooting range. This is a two-year budget that we're going to adopt tonight.
Well, no, sir, not exactly. We prepare, we make the departments and the agencies prepare and submit a two-year budget. You're only adopting, officially adopting, year one of that. Although you saw both the years as a planning tool, you're only adopting first year. But yes, what we went over in the budget work sessions, you saw a two-year budget.
But we moved money from next year into this year because of the urgency of the shooting range.
Yes, sir.
It was, it was going to be there next year, but we moved it to this year.
Yes, sir.
And it was all due to urgency.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Scanlon, if the county put zero money into Whalehead Club, how would that affect the budget? The 48 cents?
It wouldn't affect it at all. The Whalehead, the Whalehead Trust, its operating cost, as well as any capital money we give them, is all funded out of oxy tax, which would have no impact whatsoever on the 48 cents.
The rural center, better known as the quote horse farm.
The rural center is also funded out of oxy tax. It is not, no property tax goes in it. Either operations of the rural center and all capital expenditures that have been done on that, that property has been funded out of oxy tax. So it has no bearing on the 48 cents at all.
And also, go ahead.
With the YMCA.
YMCA is operated and funded out of the users of the, I mean, those members that are part of the Southampton Roads YMCA are contributing to the cost of that operation. The county, county government isn't paying anything for the operations of the YMCA part of that building. In that building, we also have Parks and Recreation and we have our Senior Citizen Center and we are funding those out of the general ad form tax, but we're not proposing to really modify or change any of those services that those two departments actually provide. So I have to say, it would have no impact at all on that 48 cents.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to make a comment. I mean, since we're on the YMCA, we have the rebuild program and Dan, Scanlon and I both sit on that advisory board. And the rebuild program provides swimming lessons for every second grade, is it?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten students in Currituck County. And that is something that I just learned myself. And I think that's a remarkable program that's going on so that each one of our kindergarten students have the opportunity to learn how to swim. And, you know, I mean, we've talked about the swimming pool and things like that. So those are things that are just important that we're still able to provide through the YMCA.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
While we were talking about occupancy tax, by statute, the occupancy tax has to be spent for certain expenditures, not by our doing, but by statute, correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean, the question I'm sure will be, okay, well, okay, you fund these things out of occupancy tax. Well, how about if you took the occupancy tax and put that in the general fund and used it to offset the 48 cent? By statute, that cannot be done, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to speak that is not signed up? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address again for the record.
Toni Tad, 328 Mason Lane, Moyoc, North Carolina. And the reason that I just wanted to say one more thing about the public hearing, I know that these projects like COA, where is that million dollars a year? Where does that come out of? We're paying, we borrowed $10 million to pay for that. How much, how are you paying that back?
Okay, well, first of all, we didn't borrow, we didn't borrow $10 million. It's less than that. But it is being paid out of, I think it's being paid out of the sales tax that's, a portion of sales tax the county receives has got to go to capital projects. It cannot go into the general fund. And that sales tax, that capital sales tax is supporting that debt.
Capital.
But it isn't, it's not $10 million. It's less than that.
Not much. How much less?
It depends on your definition of how much is much.
Like there, there. No, there, there. Okay. If perchance bad economics give us a situation where the sales tax revenues go down and we still have to pay for COA or we still have to pay for the, well, the rural center, you're saying is all occupancy?
There is no debt on the rural center.
Okay, no debt there. Okay. So the only other, the capital projects then would be, is the Y still?
If you're concerned, if sales tax were not to materialize as we're projecting, is there a possibility, because it's a debt and there's a legal obligation of the county, that that debt would have to be transferred over?
The taxpayers are still liable.
I understand. There is, there is enough money in the reserves in the capital funds to be able to, if we had just a catastrophic year and revenues just did not come in, there's enough reserve in the capital funds to be able to carry the debt that's on that building. So it would not be, it would not be needed or required to be transferred into a higher tax rate for the taxpayers to have to support that building. There is a strategy that that would not have to happen.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just have concerns about things. We had that unemployment issue that we had to pay back. And, you know, if the economy doesn't get better, we're going to see more things like that where the federal government's going to be pushing back on the state, the state's going to be pushing back on the county. So, you know, if we can stay as nimble as we've been in the past, that would be helpful.
I share your concerns on that and we are very conservative in how we incur debt and how we manage debt to make sure that not only can we afford the debt itself today, but we can afford the debt into the outer years of the debt payment. But it's something that we are very aware of. I share your concerns with that.
That's good. And I do want to say one thing. I did come to the budget, one of the budget workshops that you had, and I appreciate the proactive way that you've worked with the county employees on health insurance. And I applaud you on that. You know, you averted a crisis that other counties are facing. So appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jessica Winterup. I reside at 115 Docsey Creek Road, right down there in Currituck. I actually went through your entire presentation online. I weeded through the PowerPoint. I went through all your budgetary documents. I actually read every single little line you have.
Thank you.
Well, numbers is kind of in my blood, but I'm not advocating, I just want to start off, I want to be very respectful, I'm not advocating a $9 million cut. But I would like to see an effort to reduce the budget that you currently have that will reflect a pulse that was taken during the home evaluation. I understand you have to do the evaluation. That goes with a lot of things. It goes with the real estate market and it goes with home loans. It goes with a multitude of things, not just the taxes. But at the same time, it's an opportunity for the county to do a pulse check and see how the economy's doing. Obviously, if the houses are going sky high and we have our record booms at the Ocean Front, we have a great economy because people are buying things, people are spending. Obviously, the county is going to do a little beef up and a little, you know, you have to get more staff on board in certain offices to deal with the new demand of the business that is generated from a higher-valued home industry. I guess that's a good way to say it. This also provides you a lot of opportunity to reduce the fat when you get your home evaluation done and it's lower. I work in the public industry and I fully understand what a budget request is. I was told that, well, not I was told, I understand that certain departments can request for the moon, request for whatever you want. Tell me what you would love to have. What is your ideal situation? And you write it down, you put a cost to it, and then management and government gets a chance to say, yes, this is a critical item, or no, this isn't so critical, let's put it off a year, we're not in good times, or we got a massive amount of new income. I went through line by line, and I don't know if the magnitude of new cars that we're buying is necessarily needed. I think it's a little, it's a, it's a luxury the government has that I can't say that everybody in the county doesn't have. That's one of them. The other one, I noticed that the shooting range asked for $25,000 originally this year. I understand that you pushed and combined the two years, I guess, for this year, which wasn't on the presentation. That's something I found out tonight. Is it possible to open that shooting range up if you're going to spend that money to be a public shooting range that's fee-based so that kids can go out and learn how to properly shoot a gun? Obviously, we are in a, a good gun location. Make it fee-based, how I'm shooting, you know, targets and not tuna cans on a log. I know any Saturday, you can always hear a semi-automatic going somewhere in the woods, but I'm not for it, whatever. We're not going to get political. There's also a significant amount of new computers that were bought. I know that technology's changing, but if you're going to raise it significantly, you really need to look at trimming the fat. I think some of this stuff is kind of fat. Where I was, at my budget request, we were told originally that we must reduce our department by 5% from jump straight. When you start doing your budget in January, your department needs to figure out how to trim 5%. I did not see how any of these departments started off trying to reduce the cost of government. It was just adding more, what do you need? Another suggestion I have, and I know I'm probably late to the game, and you've already figured out your vote, but you could freeze all any positions outside of emergency services and outside of critical positions, and critical could be determined by the county manager and you guys, obviously. Freeze those positions if, I'm going to call it an admin position, just something, you know, that you could work in multiple departments. Freeze that position and throw it over to your fee-based community, or your fee-based services, or your schools, or your sheriff, or your EMS. Throw them in a call center, do 911 calls, train them in CPR, do, do something. But try to trim your government operating funding by throwing those extra positions into your service and your fee-based positions. The other option you have is try incrementally increasing this tax rate over the next three years. You're going to hit some people hard, and it's not the people in the outer banks who are going to get hard. It's going to be your residents who are getting hit hard. If you do a 33% increase and get in the next three years over to where you want, that's a lot easier pill to swallow than going 16.5 cents. Sorry, I'm a little unorganized right now, but what do I have next? I was really offended. You guys started comparing Currituck County to other counties and industries, touting how low our tax rate is. One of the reasons I moved to Currituck County was because I didn't want big government. Those counties that offer higher taxes, they provide more services. I'm just going to leave it there. Out of curiosity, and this is a yes or no question, I know that there was recently a significant amount of home lots that were approved in a certain subdivision in Currituck. I was just wondering if the new eval took into account those taxes that would be coming due in the next year into your operating tax budget. That's, I think, about 250 additional houses, which would be a significant amount of money. Oh, last year, maybe not last year, the year before last, I work in the Virginia area, and I had to start contributing 5% to my retirement system. I hated it, it sucks, but at the same time, it's saving my public body's money, and it's what Virginia implemented. It's an idea on cutting costs. Maybe you make it a year, maybe you make it two years, maybe you make it 1%, but it's an idea on how to cut some money out of this budget to reduce the effects on the residents. Finally, I would just like that for in future years, I know you have workshops, but I would like to have at least one or two public meetings before you go to vote as soon as I sit down, because you don't really have a lot of time to look into anything. Just give us one or two public meetings where we can take what you say, chew on it a little while, come back, give you comments, and actually have it a little more publicized. The workshops don't really go on TV, you can't find them later. One more suggestion, we have this thing called Sheriff's Workforce. We get the inmates out there, and they are ditch cleaning, they are out there in the mosquitoes, and the blood heat is summer, just sweating their butts off, but they're cheap labor. You give them a ham sandwich and an apple in a brown bag, and two sheriff's officers get overtime to watch them go, and that's cheaper than paying a maintenance crew to go out there and do the work. Respectfully, that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scanlon, the automobiles, where do they go to?
Well, I tried to cover what she had a lot in there.
Sheriff?
Sheriff is predominantly where the automobiles are being purchased. In fact, I think in the first year of the budget, if just about every vehicle we're buying is in the sheriff's department. When we look at the, the number of person, she, the sheriff has adopted a vehicle replacement program, and I know the raw number seems like a lot of vehicles, because it is a lot of vehicles. But when you look at the, the staff and the patrol officers we have, that is replacing a patrol officer's vehicle every five years. So could we, in fact, let me kind of come back to that, but she had mentioned that why didn't we ask our departments to submit a reduced budget? For the last three or four years, we have been doing that. If you kind of remember the graphic, the line was actually decreasing over several years. We had gone through several years, we have gone to our departments and we've told them, you need to bring in either a zero increase or a 5% decrease, and we've been doing that several years. So we have been doing that, the economy's starting to rebound a little bit, so we weren't in that position where we had to continue to, to cut all the budgets. When we did that, one of the strategies that we had, that the sheriff's department used to get hers down was delaying some of the acquisitions of vehicles. Good strategy in difficult times. The problem with that is some of those strategies come back to catch you. When you start having your patrol vehicles out there for six years, you start having a, there's an additional cost above and behind the replacement that you start having with those. So when you look at it, the number sounds high in, in raw numbers, but what it basically is, is a replacement plan. Every five years, the patrol officer's vehicles are replaced, and that generally is, they're almost, I think they're like 180,000, almost 200,000 when, when they're replaced. Let me see here, the things that she mentioned. Freezing positions, we actually are doing that. At this moment, I can think off the top of my head, probably three positions that are froze. That's a strategy that we have in place, and, and we are, we have not rushed to replace positions. In fact, I think it might be four. I think there's actually two in the inspections Department where we've had building inspectors that have left, that with activity down, we have, we have not increased the, those positions, we've left them vacant. The shooting range, right now, it is not, the conversation of this Board of Commissioners has not been to open that up as a public range. If, if, if we want to move in that direction, there's additional costs that would have to go into some of the preliminary designs for that range, because it's specifically being designed to meet the qualifications that the deputies have to do in carrying a weapon. So it's, there's, had to be design change. There's certainly some cost of operating and the liability cost of having a public range. This time, we're not heading in that direction, so doing that is something the board could look at, but it actually would be some additional costs associated with doing so.
On that issue, Mr. Scanlon, I believe the Board of Commissioners discussed that a year or so ago, and we were talking more than a million dollars for a shooting range that you let the public enter into and use, which would be
Yes, sir.
Quite contrary to what we're trying to do with the budget. I was thinking it was somewhere around $3 million was the figure I think was bandied about to make it accessible
Yes, sir.
All the liability, and to make it where people would come.
As opposed to $200,000.
Yeah.
The Board, I mean, you did have a, a, a public shooting range proposed to the Board, and, and so that, that was considered. Mentioned computers. I know if you look in there and you look at the ITS Department, you will see a, a large number. Several years ago, we took the position that we used to buy the computers at the departmental level. We do not, we no longer do that. All the computers the county buys in the course of the year comes out of a single line item, so the line item as a dollar is certainly a large dollar amount. Just like vehicles, we have a systematic computer replacement program to be able to stay up with technology, and all of that, again, comes out of that single, that single line item. Evaluations for new homes, by statute, we have to evaluate property that exists on the ground. So one of the things, one of the strategies I think that was talked about is next year, over the next couple of years, can we look at the rate? Homes that are subdivisions that the Board has approved that are under construction or are coming to record now is what will add to that tax base that in this time next year or thereafter, you'll be able to look at that rate to determine whether you want to decrease it. But you cannot take in consideration in the valuation of the county, projects or values that don't exist. In fact, if it's a house that is partially constructed, again, on January 1st, you only can take in consideration the value as it actually exists at that time, at that date and time. A strategy that a lot of governments, local governments are doing is starting to make county employees contribute to either their, their health insurance cost or retirement. That certainly is a very viable strategy. We, at this point in time, haven't picked that up. As we, as we talked at the budget work session, we have modified our tier structure to make sure that we are being equitable with the market on how we're doing that, but that's a valid point, that there are more and more local jurisdictions that are looking for employees to start contributing to their retirement and/or health insurance. Again, we haven't implemented that strategy, but it's certainly something we can look at. We do use inmate workforce. The sheriff is, for years now, has had a very successful programs where the inmates go out and they, they're picking trash up off the side of the road.
If I may say, I believe, I know Ralph Dowdington's in charge of that, like she said, people far as overtime or whatever. It's one, one individual, and I believe he's received numerous awards from the state for, you know, for all that they've done, and so if I might add that.
Yeah, so I mean, so we, it's, I mean, it's an excellent idea, and, and we've actually, for a couple of years now, actually been, have been doing that, using more inmate labor on our, our sides of our roads. Certainly opening up the budgetary process and, and public hearings is, is, is always a good idea, and it's something we certainly can look at as we start looking at the budget for next year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One thing that I think you did, you did miss, and I think it's very important for people to hear, from the budgets as they come in to you guys, and you started working these, from the amount that was requested to the amount that ended up was about a $7 million decrease. Am I correct?
It was $7.5 million, yes.
$7.5 million from what was requested to where we're at now.
Yes.
I think that's important for people to understand and realize.
Yes, when we, when we started the process, day one, and everybody submitted, not only county departments, but the agencies we historically fund, when all that was submitted to us, we had a $7.5 million deficit that the finance director, Sandra Hill, and myself had to work through in order to present you not only a balanced budget, but a budget that is just a little over, I think it's 1.4% increase over the, the current year's budget.
I think one other thing, I'm going to say it, it's important. We talk about homes, as homes come into county, looking at taxes and this, that, and the other. Generally, homes does not support the tax base of the county. Stop and look at it. How big of a home do you have to build at a .48 cent value to, to have $2,500 that just goes to educate a child? One child? Most homes that I know of don't have a $2,500 tax base that comes from them.
I think we can say that for each home that is built in Currituck County, the actual cost of supplying services is somewhere around $2,000 per new home, over and above what they're paying in taxes.
We're talking 27?
So building communities and expanding new developments in the county is something that does raise the cost of services.
You're talking $27 million of ad valorem taxes, and we're talking a $47 million budget to provide the services and operate the county. There's a $20 million bogey there somewhere of taxes that's being paid from other things, occupancy tax, transfer taxes, everything else that goes about just to meet the needs of providing the services to the citizens of the county. So it's not all about the ad valorem taxes and the tax rate that's on our properties. I don't like, I don't like paying more taxes anymore than anyone else does. I don't think there's a person up here that will say that they do.
Are you a taxpayer?
Unfortunately, yes, I am.
We're all on the same vote on that.
But it's, it's, you know, Lord have mercy, we've beat our heads to death trying to figure out things to do with this, and I'm just, I don't know, I don't know what else to do.
And I just need some clarification. I know that, like, Parks and Recreation implemented a new computer system so that you could reserve, you know, the, the facilities throughout the county and also registering for different sports events and things like that. Is that, that's through the Parks and Recreation, or is that through the IT as far as that system purchasing?
Through IT.
Okay, so that is part of that increase in the IT department?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Well, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak that didn't have a chance? With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will say one thing that keeps getting lost in the shuffle. People of Currituck County enjoy a tremendous amount of services and low taxes regardless what the tax rate is because of all the absentee property owners on the Currituck Outer Banks. If it wasn't for the absentee property owners on the Currituck Outer Banks to provide the same level of services that the citizens enjoy in this county, talking about fire, EMS, education, parks and rec, senior center, whatever, we couldn't do any of that, wouldn't be any of that at the level that we have in this county. We have no municipalities. The county is responsible for every single service in the county. We have isolated areas such as Knott's Island, you have to provide services. Carova Beach, you have to provide services. Gibbs Woods, you have to provide services. Corolla, this county is probably the most diverse county in the entire state from a geographic standpoint, and you have to provide education to every one of those people. So we have a school at Knott's Island, we have schools in Lower Currituck. I mean, there are things that, that the county is required to provide by general statutes. And I do have to say that Currituck County's budget has been flat for a number of years, and the, the years that it increased were because of enterprise funds and things that had nothing to do with the tax rate. It was because of the special projects and such as that. So the .48 and a half cent rate is what it is regardless, and I think it was suggested that we raise the rates three years in a row to, to try to level it off. Well, the services start July 1st, and the economy going down, yep, that's true, but how many people have we lost in the county? The population stayed the same, so you still have to have somebody respond for a fire call, you still have to have somebody respond for EMS call, you still have to have schools to educate people, and you still have to have the same things whether the economy is, is up or down. And the economy is why the land valuations have gone down, and it's hitting every county in the state that's doing a revale. And I look to our folks to the north, they're paying a dollar or more per hundred, and I would submit that some of them don't get the same level of services or opportunities that we have in Currituck for more money. Then I look to our, our friends in the south in Dare County, they have a population of, I don't know, about 30?
35.
$35,000. They have, Dare County alone has well over 700 employees. That doesn't even count the towns and the cities. The, the level of, of taxation to our south is way higher than us, to the north is way higher than us, to the west of us is higher than us.
Camden.
Even in Camden. And I want to commend the county manager, and I want to commend the finance officer for the job that they've done, cutting the request and the budget and not filling the positions and not creating new expenditures to go against the ad valorem taxes. So with that, that's all I have to say. Yes, sir?
I have a couple of things. My wife and I moved down from Norfolk because of taxes. I talked to my next-door neighbor yesterday. Their tax, Norfolk's fixing to go to $1.16 per 100. This home is a 2,400 square foot home. It is on the beach, but the, the property tax to the city in Norfolk is $14,000 a year. They have lowered the price of this home to 400,000, and nobody's even looking at it. They've lowered the price more than half, and the, the property tax is $14,000 a year. There's no way. I mean, you've got to make 2,000 to make it to pay 1,000. The other thing is this, and I said it before and I'll say it again because I was affected by it. There's a lot of people that put their life savings and their nest egg and their money down as a down payment on their home so they can have a lower payment and have something maybe that you can fall back on if you need to refinance or whatever. There are people that have lost a million dollars in their home. I know a person personally, $200,000 gone. home. I know a person personally, $200,000 gone, cash down. So I'll tell you what, everybody that's jumping up and down about their tax going up $500 or $600 a year, here's what I'll do. I'll find you somebody that'll pay that $500 or $600. You put that $200,000 back in their pocket. And the last thing I'd like to do, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
I have a motion for approval as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you've closed the public hearing.
It closed the public hearing.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item B, public hearing in action. Mr. Woody, I received a message from the applicant saying he did not realize he was on the agenda tonight, and he is doing his best to get here. And I told him that he would have to be here to, for his item to be heard. So on item B, that is the rule. You have to have someone here to represent you, correct?
That's what it's been.
I, I don't know that that's an ordinance requirement.
It, it's not an ordinance requirement, but I think it's a, a procedure that the board has historically followed.
I would say as a practical matter, to the extent, I believe this is a quasi judicial matter.
Yes.
I, I don't know that the app, the applicant not being present or someone representing their interests is gonna be able to-
No, you can't have the quasi judicial-
Submit sufficient evidence for y'all to be able to make a, a determination as to whether the requirements of the ordinance were met to begin with.
Will it be permissible to, with the board to just continue that item in the event he shows up before we recess?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Item B of the public hearing. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item C was continued, so we'll move to new business, board appointments. We have fire and EMS advisory board meeting, a, a meeting. Fire and EMS appointment, I believe, one is-
Commissioner McCord has an appointment, and then the body as a whole. Some of these appointments are actually recommendations from the voluntary, from the volunteer fire departments. So you have two of those from the volunteer fire departments in front of you that, that as a board, they're asking you to approve. And then Commissioner McCord actually has a direct appointment.
All right. Are you prepared?
Yes, I'm prepared. Jeff Shell for my fire and EMS advisory board appointment.
And is the board okay with George Berg, Bergamany and Mitch Copeland?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve.
Yes.
Okay. So all three in one motion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next item is appointment to Whalehead Board of Trustees. We have, ooh, somebody needs to make all this into one motion so that, we have Cliff Scott for reappointment. I assume that-
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Scott.
Um, you have an appointment, Mr. Martin?
Uh, Don Cheeks.
Don Cheek. And then we have Mr. Travis Morris is a-
I make a motion to reappoint Mr. Morris.
Okay. And then it was discussed Penny Leary Smith and Joanna Brumsey for the other two slots. Is that concurrents?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
A second.
A second.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Mr. Scanlon, is there anything that needs to be discussed in the consent agenda?
Um, no, sir.
Okay. Need a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed. Commissioners report. Mr. McCord?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Griggs?
Just one thing, an observation. I know this week, virtually all the members of this board were working very hard to see that the county's interests were represented at the state level, reaching out, contacting representatives on several bills that would have had an impact, a negative impact, if you will. And I know that, I know that Butch worked really hard. I know that Paul did, and I know Vance did. And in fact, all of us reached out to try to mitigate any damage, or at least, or to try to block any negative damage that would have been visited upon this region because of some of the bills that were out there. And I think as of today, we have been successful. So I'd like to commend the board for the, a lot of stuff happens behind the scenes that commissioners get tied up in to try to, to forward the best interests of the county. And I think this was a good week for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Mr. Martin?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Mr. Idlet?
Couple things. I'd like to expand on what Mr. Griggs said. I'm proud to be a part of this board. This past couple, three weeks, we have worked good together. We've got some things accomplished, and I'm, I'm, I'm proud of it. Second thing, Fire and Emergency Services Advisory Board. When their budgets were all submitted, and they all come in from the volunteer fire departments this year, they were in loads of different orders on how things were done. There would be a letter coming from the Fire and Emergency Services Advisory Board to you, Mr. Scanlon, from the chairman, and asking for us to sit down and figure out a standardized budget request form. They were asking for-
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hill to be a part of that and maybe provide some training. I mean, as, as we tried to look at those things, there were things that were consumable items that some people were classifying as, as capital type things. We just need to get it to where we can compare apples to apples, and I think it'll-
Standard format.
Standard format. Yes. And the volunteer fire departments are on board with it. So everybody seems to be on board. So if we can get that done-
We can.
I think we can accomplish something. So that, that will be coming. With that being said, thank you, and I'll hush.
Okay.
I would like to compliment our county manager, Dan, and our Finance Minister, Sandra Hill. Good job. And I can tell you, during the two days of budget meetings, each commissioner had a pet project to do this, or to do this, or do this, do that. We held the line. And there was a lot of give and take, mostly give, that we gave in, and we just, we can't have it. One of which was some of the volunteer fire departments who cover us when there's a fire or whatever asked for some budget increase. We weren't able to figure out how to do it yet. And we couldn't do it this year. We're gonna have to look at it next year. So, and we're in the process of having a reevaluation of the fire departments to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck. But when you have to tell volunteer fire departments you have to hold the line in spending, money is tight. And so I compliment our county manager, our Finance Director, and for a job well done. And I think we're very, very, very lucky to have you guys. So I appreciate it.
Do it with that.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
Um, I too want to concur with each one of my colleagues that have given kudos to our county manager as far as presenting the budget items to us. I will continue, and I, I want to speak for each one of us, that we will continue on looking at improvements. I mean, some of the suggestions that have been made this evening, I certainly will take into consideration. And, and there are some things that, that we can do and that we can improve upon. And, you know, I, I'm on board with that, and I should hope that each one of my colleagues are in the same position with me as far as, I mean, our work is not over. I mean, just because the budget has been, you know, accepted, our work is not over. So we've got to continue to strive to, to make those improvements, and, and I'm committed to that. The second thing is, is we have the Moyoc Small Area Plan, and I checked the website right before the meeting, and it is scheduled for June 10th at the Moyoc United Methodist Church at 7:00 PM. This is a public meeting so that the Stakeholders Committee can present the progress that we've made thus far. So I encourage each one of you that would like to attend that public meeting to be there June 10th, 7:00 PM at the United Methodist, Moyoc Methodist Church.
Thank you. I have a segue on Mr. Griggs' comments. There was a, a lot of stuff going on in Raleigh over the last couple of weeks as bills were crossing over, and they were getting down into the weeds a little bit on some issues that would have had negative impacts on not just Currituck County, but a whole lot of counties. And a lot of the commissioners did a lot of work behind the scenes, contacting people in Raleigh and, and making sure that we were heard. They did not realize the impacts that some of these issues they were looking at were gonna have on the counties. And when they were made aware of it, they said, okay, we're gonna fix it, and we'll, we'll see at the end. But we have a, a commitment from all of them to work to slow down some of these things that they did not realize were gonna have an impact on us. So I do want to thank everybody for working hard on that. The other issue is, today I was invited to a presentation on Almarl Hospital is looking at who to contract with to provide medical services in northeastern North Carolina. And Centerra came and did a presentation today, and I have to tell you, they did a very good presentation. And I have to tell you, Centerra is already in the area, and they're gonna continue to grow. And I haven't seen the Duke Life Point presentation, nor the Vidant presentation, but I do know that the Centerra presentation was very good. And I advise the citizens of Currituck County to pay attention because you're gonna be affected by that decision in Pasquotank County with your medical care going forward as to whether it's Vidant out of Greenville, North Carolina, Duke Life Point out of Tennessee, and Centerra, which is out of Norfolk. And actually, they have so many hospitals just north of us, it's, it's hard to name them all. I think there's nine of them, seven or nine of them that they're affiliated with. So the people-
I'll share them.
Yeah. They've discovered you had a heart.
[laughter]
And they did a good repair job, good as new. But if this, this decision's gonna affect everyone in northeastern North Carolina, and everybody needs to pay attention. So with that, Mr. Scanlon, you have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to, to thank the folks that, at our last meeting, Mr. Martin brought up a PetSafe grant that was brought to his attention, and, and we didn't have a whole lot of time to respond, but we did get an application out. We requested, we tried a quick attempt at trying to get community support. The, a, a big part of whether that grant moves forward is community support. So I'd like to thank anybody and everybody that cast their vote in support of our project. The voting actually closed on the 31st. I think we only had a couple of days actually to get our votes in. So now we're anxiously waiting to see if we survive round one. If we did, we'll be going back out with another public request that folks to support that because there's still more public voting to be done. I want to thank anybody that took the opportunity to vote on that.
Currituck County beat New York City. But we'll find out December 5th exactly where we wound up.
Very good. Now, before we go to the next item, our item B public hearing applicant has made it here, Mr. White. And we, we saved you till the very last thing in the hopes that you would make it. And we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Woody for this agenda item and ask that you be sworn. I guess I need to read it first. Public hearings, item B, public hearing in action, PB 10-01, Beach Jeeps of Corolla, request to amend a use permit to reduce the permitted number of tour vehicles. The property is located at 111 Austin Road, Unit H, Tax Map 115B, Parcel 2P, 2B, Poplar Branch Township. I'm gonna swear again. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. Well, before we start, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this issue that I did not swear in? See and none, please proceed.
To be very brief, on May 6th, the Board of Commissioners approved a special use permit for wild horse tours at the Monterey Shores Plaza Shopping Center. As a condition of that approval, you requested that Mr. White bring forward his use permit for horse tours at the Corolla Light Town Center and ask for a reduction in those numbers at that existing permit. The net of all this is that tonight, if this amendment is approved, Mr. White will be reduced back down to his original number of vehicles when we adopted the licensure requirement for outdoor tour operators. This kind of makes the whole situation right. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. The staff supports this.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Woody? Mr. White, do you have anything to add?
I just have a question to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. Ben, this would be for 2014. That does not include this year. Is that correct?
Yeah. This year, you still have the ability to run eight vehicles through December 31st, 2013. And then, but nobody, nobody's reductions coming into place this year. They've all got one year to get prepared. So no, you're not adversely impacted this year. But next year-
Right.
Your reductions will kick in, and you'll be, you'll be even with that.
All right. That's it. I, I thank you very much for holding, let me come a little late. I was scooping ice cream when I realized I was supposed to be here. I think I might have a couple of troopers looking for me outside. I want to get out of here. But I made it here, and I have nothing to add. Just gonna follow through with everything and dot all the i's and cross all the t's.
Thank you. Now, by ordinance, I have to open the public hearing, but the only person signed up for the public hearing was you. Do you wish to say anything else?
No, thank you.
Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. I would like to adjourn the meeting of the, not adjourn-
Recess.
Recess the meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners and reconvene as the Tourism Development Authority. I'd like that as a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Chairman, the, the purpose of the public hearing is you sit as the Tourism Development Authority by statute. The Tourism Development Authority has the responsibility of making sure that the OxyTax is spent pursuant to the statutory limitations that we briefly talked about earlier. I don't have any additions or changes or modifications from what was presented to you at your last meeting, but we need to have a public hearing on adoption of the OxyTax portion of the budget.
All right. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Scanlon, before I open the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to the occupancy tax Tourism Development Authority budget? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion. I have a motion for approval, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I would ask that we adjourn the Tourism Development Authority and reconvene as the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to go into a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6 to discuss a personnel matter.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.